Councilmember Helen Gim, Councilwoman Cindy Bass, and Councilman Derek Green. Bill number 160110, co-sponsored by my colleague Councilman Al Toltenberger, puts forth a procurement price preference. I'll restate that. A procurement price preference in city purchasing for alternatives to expanded styrofoam, more commonly known as styrofoam. This ordinance does not, does not ban the purchasing of styrofoam by the city of Philadelphia. Instead, it requires when quality and cost are similar for the intended use, that alternatives to styrofoam be purchased. The environmental hazards of styrofoam are well documented. Styrofoam production in categories of energy consumption, greenhouse gas effects, and total environmental effects ranks only second to aluminum. Furthermore, styrofoam is a principal component of urban and marine debris and detrimental to wildlife that ingests it. This legislation not only moves the city in a more sustainable direction, it also sends a clear message that Philadelphia is quite serious about protecting our environment and taking tangible, concrete steps to leverage our buying power in achieving this goal. If this legislation once considered is passed today, Philadelphia would not be a first, but Philadelphia would join a growing number of cities, including Seattle, Washington, Portland, Oregon, Miami Beach, Florida, and Washington DC that have also already acted styrofoam legislation. Again, I want to thank my staff and the Office of Sustainability, along with the Procurement Department, for your efforts towards this end. I would now ask the Clerk to read the title of the bill.
Bill number 160110, an ordinance amending Chapter 17-600 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Procurement Price Preferences by adding a preference for alternatives to expanded polystyrene under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you very, very much. And so, we would like to ask First Panel, Trevor Day, Commissioner, Office of Procurement, and Christine Knapp, Director for the Office of Sustainability, to please proceed to the panel. And they will be followed by Panel Number Two, Edward Hazuri, on behalf of Dart Container Corporation, and Robert Anderson, Mid-Atlantic Business Development Manager for Reed Community. Good afternoon. State your names for the record, and please proceed with your testimony.
Hi. I'm Trevor Day, Procurement Commissioner for the City of Philadelphia.
Pull your mic closer to you so we can all hear you.
Trevor Day, Procurement Commissioner for the City of Philadelphia.
Good morning, or good afternoon, Christine Knapp, Sustainability Office.
Very well, proceed.
Good afternoon, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, and members of the Committee on the Environment. I am Trevor Day, Commissioner for the City of Philadelphia, and pleased to appear before you today in support of Bill 160110 that sets a preference for alternatives to polystyrene foam. There is a growing 21st century consensus that humanity is placing excessive demands on available resources through unsustainable consumption patterns. The City of Philadelphia has recognized the importance of environmental impacts, not only with the creation of the Office of Sustainability, but with the goal of making Philadelphia the greenest city in America. With regard to polystyrene foam, Procurement has already conducted a review of our contracts. Fortunately, the city minimally purchases polystyrene foam through procurement contracts. We will ensure that alternatives will be in place where cost-effective for construction, concessions, and commodities that are contracted by the city. We are working in partnership with the Office of Sustainability to review our contract portfolio and strategically implement the new sustainable policies and procedures. Green procurement offers broader capacity to mitigate over-exploitation of any and all scarce resources. The Procurement Department has made great strides in improving the city's efforts to become more sustainable. Environmental health and safety concerns are increasingly being integrated into strategic sourcing. Some of the examples of these efforts include, on our citywide Public Works contracts, language is included in each Public Works bid that every contractor complies with the Executive Order 0107 issued by Mary Street that defines clean diesel specifications for all construction vehicles used on Public Works projects. We work in partnership with the Department of Health to enforce this requirement. This, at a minimum, results in 20% reduction of diesel particulate emissions. Additionally, on our citywide office supplies contracts, the city currently purchases all of its paper contracts, or paper, as 30% recycled content, and our toner contract is 100% recycled. As a result of the toner contract, 10 tons of plastic and metal was not put into landfills. In addition, 10,000 quarts of oil was eliminated from landfills. And with regard to our citywide auction services, Procurement has an auction service that can be used to post any unserviceable or surplus inventory at MinusAbid.com. The revenue generated from these sales account for $500,000 to $1 million annually. Citywide inventory control, our procurement unit of inventory control, has successfully sold end-of-the-life vehicles, EKG machines, soap, street holes, furniture, and heavy construction equipment, and office equipment, just to name a few items. We are currently working with the departments that have acute issues with storing surplus property to assess and assist with any surplus disposal in a way that is earth-friendly. And we also work across departments on redirecting citywide waste. Procurement has contracts that are used by many departments to not only redirect waste from landfill, but also to generate revenue back to the city. Procurement holds contracts to recycle various metals and waste oil. The city even recycles brass from used ammunition collected at the police department firing range. In addition, the Procurement Department is working collaboratively with the Office of Sustainability to further implement sustainable procurement policies and procedures where the employees of the city of Philadelphia can widely adopt a planet-conscious purchasing plan. In order to achieve that strategy, the Procurement Department will be taking the following two steps. In FY17, Procurement will be creating a purchase guideline as part of our procurement manual that address practices, products, services, and food that reduce negative impacts on human health and the environment. In coordination with the Office of Sustainability, we will create an environmentally preferable purchasing plan. It's important that council's leadership foster an environment that aims to use more sustainable purchasing practices on a regular basis. We applaud Councilwoman Reynolds Brown for introducing Bill number 160110 to reduce the use of polystyrene as an example of that leadership. The Procurement Department fully supports the bill, and I greatly appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today in support of this effort.
Thank you for your testimony. I do have a few questions, but we'll complete this panel first. Christine Knapp?
Good afternoon. Again, I'm Christine Knapp, Director of the Office of Sustainability. Thank you Chairwoman Reynolds Brown, members of the committee, for the opportunity to provide testimony before you on today's Bill number 160110. The Office of Sustainability is responsible for the implementation of Green Works Philadelphia, the city's comprehensive sustainability plan. This bill, which aims to reduce the amount of expanded or extruded polystyrene, otherwise known as EPS, purchased by the City of Philadelphia, aligns with several Green Works goals, including waste diversion, improving air and water quality, and greenhouse gas reductions. I don't have to tell you about EPS, it sounds like you've already researched it well. And while the city doesn't directly purchase large quantities of EPS, this bill is an important step towards improving environmental quality by encouraging city purchasers to find EPS alternatives, a material that is not recyclable in the city's waste stream. EPS cannot be cost-effectively recycled at scale and is not recycled at the city's materials recovery facilities, known as MRF, and therefore requires special collection. The EPS industry markets its product as recyclable, but that is only technically true in very specific and limited ways. Given the current challenges in recycling markets, it's highly improbable that any facility in the region would add EPS to its recycling stream in the foreseeable future. When not disposed of properly, EPS can be a particularly harmful type of pollution. When foam enters-
I'd be interested in hearing from SBN at a later time about, you know, one of the problems that we sometimes have with government contracts is that they tend to be so big that they can't, they're not accessible to smaller entities and outfits. People can't grow into a large contract, you know, they just either assume it, which just reinforces, you know, big winners for big contracts. And this is a unique area where we are probably not going to go to super-large scales right away. We're probably going to take our time with it, make sure we're doing it right, you know, pilot it in a number of different schools. And this is a particularly important opportunity then for us to ensure that smaller providers, diverse providers, that we're getting people in, that we're starting to grow people into this business. And you're helping us think through how that's done in a really responsible way is going to be an important partnership. And I think that is true for everybody in this audience as well. But this is one of the rare opportunities, I feel like, where as you look into new expanding energy sources, we have an opportunity to grow businesses into that. And how we do that, I think, is your mission, and to the extent that we can figure out what that looks like is extremely important from the outset, you know, not, but to be super proactive about what that's going to look like, what the process is, whether we need to do more engagement, whether we need to do more workshops and training. The second thing that I think would help a lot is for SBN to start helping us identify the groups in your networks who do actually connect to or have capacity to connect with vibrant apprenticeship programs that could partner with our neighborhood public schools. We are constantly thinking through ways to make our neighborhood high schools in particular vibrant new places of opportunity. And it seems like if you know of businesses or partnerships that you can recommend, which already have an existing relationship, and Ms. Leonardopoulos, I think that this is another area where PFT could help and other institutions can help, think through who has existing apprenticeship programs, who's got a good pipeline. If not that, then how can we connect with the existing CTE programs? We're already hearing that a major, you know, trade doesn't really have the program necessarily that takes, so let's see if we can make that happen within some of our schools and the partnerships with the CTE programs to see if we can get full apprenticeships and certifications going. And I'm sure that there are other groups who are going to be coming forward to doing that, so.
Can I just respond? So I'll just say, in terms of your first point, we've worked with Councilwoman Brown's office, as well as this committee, to really look at procurement in general. And I think to your point, this is an opportunity to really model how the city in itself could do better procurement, and making sure that we're providing scalable opportunities to smaller businesses. So we certainly look forward to having that continued conversation. And I want to tee them up, but I think SBN member SolarStates, who's going to testify on the next panel, has really been working on a workforce development program that they're trying to scale up, and I'm certainly know that they will probably be open to having that dialogue.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay, then, we thank you all for your testimony, and we invite up our last and final panel, Jim Kurtz, President of RER Energy Group, Micah Gold Markell, President of SolarStates, and Hannah Miller, Field Energy Consultant for SolarCity. Is there anyone else who may desire to testify on this bill once this panel has concluded? Good afternoon, gentlemen.
Good afternoon.
Okay, you can state your name for the record, pull the mic close to you, and proceed with your testimony. We're commiserating here because we don't want to lose a quorum. We do want to take action on the first bill, and the rules require us to have a quorum, so we're trying to capture the members once more time before we proceed with our final panel. Give us a couple more minutes. One, two. Okay, so we're going to recess, only to move this measure out of committee, go into a meeting, and then come back to the hearing, because we simply want to move this off the calendar, at least for the first reading. So there being no further testimony on Bill number 160110, I will close our public hearing and recess to go into a public meeting. And I will recognize the co-sponsor of the bill, Councilman Toltenberger, please.
Thank you very much. Madam Chair, I move that Bill number 160110 be moved out of this committee with a favorable recommendation, and further move that the rules of council be suspended to allow first reading on our public session.
Okay, there a second?
Second.
Okay, this bill has been moved and properly second. That Bill number 160110 be reported from this committee with a favorable recommendation, and further move that the rules of council be suspended to permit the first reading of this bill at our very, very next session of City Council. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There being none, the motion is carried, and Bill number 160110 is moved out of this committee with a favorable recommendation, and further move that the rules of council be suspended to permit first reading of this bill at the next scheduled session of City Council, and I thank my councilmembers. We're now going to recess the meeting and go back into the hearing so that we can hear the remaining testimony on our Resolution 160221. I thank you. And with that, we want to ask our last panel to please state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Chairwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilwoman Green, and others, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Jim Kurtz. I'm the President of RER Energy Group and Sunvestment Energy Group, which is specifically focused on financing. Together, our organizations have financed, developed and financed over $100 million of projects since 2009, currently working on $15 million worth of school projects specifically. On a personal basis, I've lived in Philadelphia, have gone to school in Philadelphia, want to, I've spent some time on Wall Street, please don't hold that against me, have hopefully learned a little about financing, and we obtained a grant from the Department of Energy, which is specifically focused on how to have schools, nonprofits maximize their savings opportunities over time. So I want to share with you what I've learned, and hopefully can be helpful for your endeavor, which we think is a very wise endeavor. How does solar work? Why do investors want to invest in these projects? Solar is characterized by having high upfront costs, unfortunately, but very reliable production over time. And importantly, the high upfront costs have about 70% of those costs being reimbursed, or value being given back to investors over time. We'll talk about you, the school, the school district, you, the council, through the school district, will not have to put this money upfront. And we're going to talk about how these investors, why do these investors make these investments? The investors who are putting money in, again, are going to be getting about 70% of their investment value back from various incentives, tax credit, depreciation, other state incentives. And then, you have an asset that is so predictable, reliable, does not have high operations cost. I invested in a $700,000 system four years ago. I put in $3,000 of operations and maintenance since that investment a few years ago, extremely reliable. So, once this reliable system is working, it is capturing free fuel from the sun. That's the driver of value. And Christine Knapp emphasized that this is a longer-term play, and it is. The free fuel will drive significant value. If you simply look at the money upfront that needs to be put in, less all these incentives, look at that net investment versus the energy that's generated over time, the effective cost of energy, it would be three cents per kilowatt hour, which is without a doubt lower than what the school district is paying today. The challenge is, you have to get financiers to participate, and so they will take some money out, so your effective cost will be higher. But again, 70% of the upfront costs are covered, free fuel drives a lot of value, that's what you're taking advantage of. Who are these investors? Why, again, are they participating? You know, they see this consistent predictable production, they are getting warranties on the modules, knowing that the modules are going to maintain 80% of their production capability over 25 years. That gets them very comfortable. We've talked about the low operations and maintenance costs. The biggest risk to the investor is the question of, will the organization they're working with pay some money over time? They call it the credit risk, with the off-taker of the energy, the site host of the energy. And obviously, we would feel that the school district would be a very high, considered credit partner, would be perceived to have low risk of non-payment over time, versus a smaller nonprofit that hasn't been around for a long time, that doesn't have a tax basis. So, investors are, you know, viewing you attractively. How is this structured? You've heard the term power purchase agreement, PPA, before? So, these investors are putting money into a new entity, it's a LLC entity, that you would contract with to say, if and only if these, the solar array sends energy to you, to the schools, you would have to pay for it. You'd be paying a lower than your current rate, it would be a predetermined rate that has a fixed escalator. Importantly, the key aspects for the school district, you don't put the money upfront, you don't have to pay the operations and maintenance, the investors do, you only are signing up to pay for the energy as it's delivered. So, the risks are very well-aligned. We would envision, through Office of Sustainability, other organizations would run an RFP to determine, you know, who would be the developer of the project, and the developer would bring in investors. We advocate, and one of the reasons why we got a grant from the Department of Energy, we advocate bringing in local investors. There has been a lot of conversation here today about using local workers, which we also agree with. The comment about utilizing, underutilized assets, the roof. We would encourage you to consider local investors as well, because local investors might want to help the school district outside of financial investors across the country who don't have as much vested interest with you. Again, the $100 million that we've been a part of, there are, it's estimated, 32 very large organizations that participate actively in these investments, the Goldman Sachs of the world, Bank of America, and all the organizations. There are many, both banking institutions and businesses, that might want to get involved with your project and keep the money local, to circulate it around in the local economy. Importantly, these investors we talked about are getting this tax credit. It's worthwhile noting that the tax credit was extended at the 30% level in this past December. It was supposed to be reduced to 10%. You effectively have another two and three-quarters years to get that 30% level. It will take a long time to work through all these details. This is at least a year-plus project. So, after the 30%, it steps down for two years, but it will go to 10% over time. And the difference of the investors getting a 30% tax credit versus a 10% tax credit, obviously is 20%. The Penn Environment Report estimated this as $150 million. 20% of $150 million is $30 million. So, one of the reasons we would advocate for you moving forward earlier rather than later, it will take time to work these projects out, make sure you're capturing the full 30% before it falls down. So, you know, as I look at this, we have talked already to investors about the potential for the project, and they say absolutely they would be interested in the project. So, there are investors who would be willing to upfront this value for you. We felt the Penn Environment Report, which was very thorough, and we highly commend them for that effort, was very conservative on the savings estimates. I understand why they might want to be conservative, but when we look at the investors we deal with, and with the rates that were stated in that report, think that $13 million over 30 years is very, very conservative estimate, and glad to, you know, help with analyzing that more over time. But, in sum, others are willing to pay for this. The risks for the school district, we only pay if the energy is delivered, if the energy is not delivered, that's, you don't have to pay. So, you can capture a lot of savings, there's a low level of risk, and we commend you for pursuing this effort.
Thank you very, very much. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Reynolds Brown, Vice Chairwoman Bass, Councilman Green, Councilman Toltenberger. It's great to be here in the Committee on the Environment. Thank you for hosting today's hearing, and a special thank you to Councilman Green and Chairwoman Reynolds Brown, for your staff, and your staffs, for your help generating momentum on this critical issue of solar on schools. I've been pushing and pulling towards this moment for years now, so I'm very pleased to be here. My name is Micah Gold Markell, and I founded a Philadelphia-based local solar installation and education firm named SolarStates in 2008. We have a headcount of 18 wonderful employees. When I was here talking about procurement, we were at 16, so we've added two since then. And we have installed more than 200 solar arrays, and we're on track to double our revenue this year. We are now in multiple millions of dollars of revenue. Several weeks ago, I listened to the sincere needs of our young citizens for jobs and prospects for their future during Councilman Johnson's hearing on youth violence. I want you to know that I hire young Philadelphians, ex-offenders, Power Corps service members, and Youth Build Philly Charter School graduates currently. And I'd like to add, we have several Community College of Philadelphia employees as well, folks who went through the solar training program. Most of these folks have troubled backgrounds in other employers, that other employers would likely avoid, but we see the hard work they're putting in to straighten out their lives. We actively work with these folks to ensure they are getting the support they need beyond just a good-paying job. And I'd like to take a moment to recognize John Bowie, who is here with Serenity House Solar. We have a partnership with Serenity House where we have two interns, Kai and Robert, who have come to work with us, both from North Philadelphia, from the area that Serenity House serves. Kai, I gave her this book, we do training on solar, I gave her the book to help her start training to get her certification, what's called NABSEP certification, it's the certification for solar installers. She read it in one day and jumped to the head of the class. This is a woman who was previously homeless two years ago, and she's incredible. She's going to start working in our electrical division and probably move right up into solar installing very soon. Additionally, I'd like to hire something that's really exciting, which is right next to our warehouse, which is located at Jefferson and American Streets in South Kensington, North Philadelphia area. We've just signed an agreement of sale on land, and we hope to do employee housing as part of the project there. Again, this is something that we've identified, because we've been in this field for years now, that transportation issues are a big problem for certain employees who need to get to work early in the morning. So I want to park a good portion of our employees right next to our shop so that we can have them there right when we need to get to work in the morning. In addition to receiving training on how to install solar, our employees learn how to use a variety types of software, customer service skills, and manage projects. Our goal is to develop upper-management employees in-house, and potentially have them spin off and do solar on their own, in an entrepreneurial spirit. We developed a solar education curriculum with Youth Build Philly Charter School. We are one of the only solar installation companies that has a dual focus of installation and education, and our curriculum creates a path to jobs in the solar industry. We have also worked with a number of public schools, including the Science Leadership Academy and the Workshop School, now located in West Philadelphia. We pay a living wage, and we can grow our impact. The solar industry can hire more Philadelphians with your help, which I'll return to at the end of my testimony. I want to highlight for you why doing solar on schools, and for that matter, all large buildings, can be literally a zero-cost proposition for institutions like the school district and other institutions that own real estate. As Jim just noted, there is a zero upfront cost to a power purchase agreement, and I'm going to come back to that number a lot, because I think that this is the real opportunity here. SolarStates is also the owner of what is called a power purchase agreement. This is a contract between my- This is a contract between my firm and the owner of the Crane Arts Building, located on North American Street, just above Gerard and Second. Our contract leases the rooftop of the Crane to SolarStates for the purposes of placing 444 solar panels on the roof of the Crane. That's an 82 KW solar array. SolarStates owns and maintains the array for the 25-year term of the lease, which is also the warranted life of the solar panels. And I'd like to reiterate something that Jim said here about maintenance. I'd say we spent, and I'll go over this a little later, about $550,000 putting the array in, and we've probably spent in the realm of $1,000 maintaining it over five years. I mean, very little maintenance is necessary. The contract also obligates the Crane to buy energy from SolarStates, but it's at a guaranteed 20% savings every year. So every year, they're saving 20% on PICO, and we pegged our rate on the price to compare from PICO. This gives the owner of the Crane Arts a stable, low-cost energy hedge that not only costs them $0, but it also guarantees them savings going forward. At the time of the installation five years ago, the Crane Array cost $550,000, but the building owner paid zero. And I'll repeat that again. They paid zero, and this is what we would like to do with the school district because we understand that they are cash-strapped. We are not asking for any money out of pocket. Solar purchased through a PPA costs the building owner zero upfront and can actually save them money over time. As the owner of the array located on the roof of the Crane, SolarStates secured funding for the array. Additionally, SolarStates monitors its performance and handles any maintenance and assures that it works. And this is very important because, again, as Jim mentioned, this really aligns the power purchase agreement investors with the district because their goal is to have the solar array produce as much energy as possible because that's what gives them a return on their investment. And the district wants that same thing because they're getting more guaranteed savings the more power that's there. Also, the district may not have the expertise to maintain it over time if it does need maintenance, and the investor group does have that through a contract with the solar These activities are spelled out in the PPA. Again, the building owner pays zero. There are also organizations with the capital to fund millions of dollars' worth of solar PPAs, including organizations like Jim's RER, but also nonprofits like the Sustainable Energy Fund, who we currently work with. These nonprofits are mission-driven and would make an excellent funding partner as well. The PPA on the Crane is an example of one of the two financing mechanisms noted in the excellent Solar on Schools report put together by Penn Environment. I've personally visited multiple schools, inspected out PPAs that could work on their roofs. I believe that five to 10 schools could have solar-generated power and real educational opportunities for students with, again, zero out-of-pocket cost, and this could happen very quickly. This would be a shot in the arm for the school district as it would generate not only great energy but fantastic press, something that is sorely needed. All that is needed is roof access, some brief analysis work, and a PPA that leases the rooftop space. As you might imagine, this would also mean family sustaining, pay, and work for Philadelphians. There are some newer school buildings, which are great candidates because they are designed with energy-efficient features in place. So I completely agree that energy efficiency is first, but we have that already in a number of our buildings, so they're ready for solar. For older buildings, solar can be considered in concert with energy audits and other efficiency upgrades. Back to my company, SolarStates. Listening to Councilman Johnson's hearing on youth violence, I heard your frustration with people in suits discussing workforce readiness training, and I heard the call for the solution: jobs for Philadelphians. The renewed public sector interest in energy efficiency due to recent public policy initiatives, principally the Philadelphia Energy Campaign and the solar-on-schools effort we are discussing today, offers the potential for real workforce development and employment growth in local solar, and I am eager to help and to hire more. And just to bring a little anecdote about today, I brought with me, this is called a, let me get the name right, it's a combination between a jaun and an ornament, so it's called a jaunament. And it was made, uniquely Philadelphian saying, I think. It was made at the Workshop School in West Philadelphia, where this morning we had a discussion about how important solar is. Mayor Kenny was gracious enough to attend, as well as Council President Clark. And I brought this here because the students there are learning about solar. We're working with them as well to have a training program for solar. We have these programs in place, and we are going to grow organically. We're at 18 folks. Probably by the end of the year, we'll be closer to 30, and I'm hoping over the next few years, we get up to 50. But we can employ 100, 200 folks locally, and this is so key because this seems to be the focus of everyone on council, but it's also our focus as well. How do we get these jobs to the folks who need them most?
Thank you.
And so we will be pushing for local employment. That's what we're all about. So I'd like to invite you on a tour of our PPA at the Crane Arts Building. I would love to show you this magnificent solar array and how it works. If we take the next steps laid out in the Penn Environment Report, we can see solar on schools as well as jobs for Philadelphians in the near future. And that's key. It needs to happen now. We can't wait any longer for these jobs. They're really, they're within our grasp, and it's up to us to take this moment and squeeze it and get it right. Let's become a national model. Let's make it happen. Thank you very much.
But thank you very, very much, both of you, for your very compelling testimony. And it's really a no-brainer. It's just a matter of us figuring out how we get it right, if we're authentic about trying to save the lives of the type of men and women Councilman Johnson is talking about. So I want to, I know Councilman Green may have questions or comments, but just thank him again for elevating this in a way that, prior to the Penn Environment Report, it's been whispered about, but it's never been put on the radar screen in a real strategic, tangible, in-your-face way where all of us can look to see what the opportunities are and then approach those opportunities in a way that really addresses this 26% poverty rate. But Councilman Green?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Too often, the city operates in silos and doesn't work in a collaborative or holistic way. And when you mentioned some of the impact of Councilman Johnson and Councilman Jones' hearing on youth violence and reference to gun violence, and it kind of brought home this more holistic approach that we need to have in the city. I've said it probably five times today about leveraging assets because we need to do a better job in doing that, and how we can use our assets, like our school buildings, to help both environment, job opportunities, and also health in the city of Philadelphia. And this conversation reminds me of conversations I was having a little while ago in reference to ESCO projects or energy savings contracts. And Governor Rendell had already used ESCO contracts for GSA buildings in Harrisburg, and it took a long time before the city moved forward on doing ESCO projects. We're finally doing one now with New ESCO for the Quadplex, which includes this building, Municipal Services Building, One Parkway, and Criminal Justice Center. And so when I think of the idea of solar panels on school buildings, it's another opportunity to do things in a more creative way, and let's not focus on what we can't do but what we can do.
Yes.
So I'm curious, in reference to, from both of your experiences, one, what have you seen in other jurisdictions in reference to solar panels? I think one initial reluctance aspect, I think you both spoke about in reference to this belief of the cost investment of getting involved in solar panels or solar, and we have limited resources, so how can we even do, we have limited resources for our existing capital projects, how can we do something even different than what we currently do? And that, once again, speaks to not being creative and not looking at P3s like a power purchase agreement. So if you could speak on what other jurisdictions are doing regarding power purchase agreements?
Sure. Go ahead. Do you want to start?
Go ahead.
Okay. I mean, we see a lot of PPAs in New Jersey, and a big reason for that is the SREC market.
Is it what market?
SREC. That stands for, I'm sorry, the Solar Renewable Energy Certificate.
Okay.
You know, we have a problem in Pennsylvania where our SRECs are very low, and that's principally due to the alternative energy portfolio standard. That's a big problem. We absolutely should go to our state legislature and try to fix that. And if we do, I think the number-one thing that we have to say to our state legislatures, and we should really only say one thing, and that's close the borders to Pennsylvania. And what that means is, and I wrote an op-ed about this, so pardon me if I go off a little bit, but what that means is, in Pennsylvania, we had a ratepayer subsidized SREC market, meaning from about 1999 to 2004, we saw a tax on our electric bills to subsidize this SREC market, okay? What's happening, instead of Pennsylvania getting these jobs as a result, we're having folks from North Carolina sell their SRECs into our market because they don't have an SREC market there because their legislature didn't support such an idea. They're selling it in, and they're taking essentially this Pennsylvania taxpayer money, and they're transferring it to North Carolina to create jobs. It's shameful. It is shameful, and so we need to fix that. So that's one of the reasons why we see a lot more PPAs in New Jersey than in Pennsylvania. That said, this is a solvable problem now. We can do PPAs now. We can make the math work because the cost of solar has come down so significantly because of creative investment vehicles, like Mr. Kurtz brought up, where we can bring in community investors, where we can use these tax credits. But we need to get moving sooner rather than later. That 30% tax credit is going to go away, and it takes a while for these things to mature and to happen. So really, the urgency is now. You know, it's, let's figure out how to do this now. We can do it now. How do we do it? Let's get the RFPs going. Let's get the school district on this. And I know there are a lot of fires. Everybody is looking around, you know, there's no money in the budget for this, there's problems at the district for that. But if we constantly put out fires rather than, you know, sort of setting the stage for what's next, we're never going to get anywhere, and we need to start thinking about how do we improve, not just put out fires.
Sure.
Right.
We think alike, and was going to emphasize some of those points, and I think if you can assist with that concept of walling off the state for our SRECs as different conversations happen, that would be very wise. But Mike's point about that not leading to you stopping currently is a very, very good point. If you address that issue, there could be more savings to the school. The SRECs would be even more valuable, but it can work today. And more on that, you first asked about the perspective of other municipality school districts that we're talking to. We just completed the largest PPA in Iowa. We're doing PPAs across New York. We've done them in Maryland, and we have done them in Pennsylvania as well. And as we're out and about traveling, people say, you know, "How is your hometown state doing?" And I say, "Well, it's very interesting. There is a perception problem." And the perception problem is the state grants have gone away, and therefore, you know, it doesn't work anymore. And it was even commented early on about those state grants being there. When we started in 2009, state grants provided up to 20% to 30% of the cost of the project. Since that time, prices for the entire system have dropped 60.
Wow.
You've lost 20% to 30%, you've gained 60. You're in a better situation. So again, you have no reason to hold back because you only have, because this is complicated. More feedback, I've presented to, you know, many councils and boards and so forth. It is never a one-time conversation, as I'm sure you're going to find out to get these things understood. This concept of, "We don't have to put any money up front. What are our obligations?" These contracts are complicated. You know, you're not allowed to shade your roof. There are certain aspects that you, you know, need to read the details of. So, you know, these are 50, 60-page contracts. Other organizations are potentially going to put $150 million into this. They're not going to do that without a long process, a tight contract, but it's worth your interest because exactly what was emphasized, how well it's aligned. Those investors are not going to get their money fully back unless they're producing energy you only have to buy when the energy is being produced. So there's good alignment. There is not the need to have state grants. The prices come down enough. We would encourage you to advocate for walling off our state so that North Carolinians cannot come in because that will give you more savings over time. But you should be going ahead now because it'll take a little time to work out all these details, but there's a lot of savings to be had.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for your comments. As a grandson of a North Carolinian, I have some, I hear your concern and perspective, although we still have a farm down there. But what you say, to me, sometimes I think it's maybe something in the water, maybe it's our quaker sensibilities, that we are very reluctant to doing things because the same conversation, I mean, I can repeat the same conversation I have with people with the founders of Recycle Bank and the challenges in getting that done. And they were going, they were started in Philadelphia. We're doing much more work outside of Philadelphia than in Philadelphia. Right now, looking at ideas of social impact bonds and pay-for-success model. TRF is an entity that was started in Philadelphia. Four of the 11 pay-for-success bonds have been done outside of the region. Once again, it's reluctance, and I'm really, it is really frustrating and challenging because I often try to think things outside of the box and try to look at things in a creative way, especially when we have limited resources and assets. So the concept of recommending to the General Assembly to close our borders to others, even though they may be from North Carolina, is something that, I think from a legislative perspective, is something that this body should probably do as well. Thank you.
Yes. Please.
One more comment that hasn't been talked about much today, and I just want to make sure that this perspective is shared. It was shared earlier about prices being at a 12-year or 17-year low, I've heard, because natural gas prices have been low. Would encourage you to also do additional research. We've done it. We'd be glad to follow up and share more of what the forward prices for natural gas are in the United States, in this area. Natural gas is the driver of electric prices. Oil is often what we all see because we go get gas. Oil represents 1% of electric generation in America. So it's natural gas that is the driving price factor. And yes, natural gas is at a 12- or 17-year low. However, we have just converted a major import facility to an export facility in Louisiana. There are pipelines that are being built to take our natural gas from this marcelish Pennsylvania area up into England. The prices for natural gas are double or triple in Europe and Asia versus the United States, and so this is a commodity, and capitalistic forces are doing what they do, and they are going to get that natural gas to other markets where the price is higher. The forward curve, this is not any predictions of academics or us as a businessperson, financial traders on Wall Street who predict the price of natural gas, seeing it doubling by the year 2023. And so that is going to be the driver of your electricity prices, and so there might be people who say, "Ah, electric prices haven't increased a whole lot." They haven't recently, but they're going to because of the price of natural gas is going to be increasing. So it's not as much pain, but this opportunity for long-term savings will be there in addition to the opportunity for job growth and other aspects that have been mentioned. So I just wanted to have that perspective on natural gas and your long-term prices.
And if I may just add a little bit onto that, you know, there were dire predictions two, three years ago. Well, if energy prices drop, the solar industry is going to go away because they can't compete on price, and that's what we call grid parity. Solar can't be the same price as our natural gas-produced electricity. Well, in fact, the opposite has happened. We've had a tremendous price drop, and solar grows by 100% every few years. It's still tremendous growth in the industry despite the headwinds of very low energy costs. And this should tell us something about where the industry, in terms of solar, is going.
Yes, it's headed. Read the tea leaves.
Free fuel from the sun, hard to beat that price.
Right.
Councilman?
Yeah, Madam Chair, thank you very much. And in full disclosure, I do not have anyone related to me in North Carolina. And in full disclosure, I do not have anyone related to me in North Carolina. But gentlemen, I do want to thank you and all the other folks that testified. You've enlightened us, and I think the opportunity for modern technology, for saving dollars, for creating jobs, for helping people get out of poverty, it's so very, very important. And we look forward to working with you, I do personally, I speak, I'm sure for other folks on this committee, to make this not just an idea but really come full fruition. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Closing comments by the sponsor of the resolution, Councilman Green.
Once again, I, one of the things I often have a long memory about things, and this conversation reminds me when I first started my career as a small business lender at Meridian Bank, and we had what was called a card called the Advantage Card, and it was a Visa debit card. And this is in the early 90s. And because it had a Visa logo on it, people assumed it was a credit card with a rate of interest. And when I tried to tell people, no, this is a Visa debit card, meaning you can access your checking account, people were like, "What's the interest rate? What's the monthly payment?" I said, "No, it's just a Visa debit card." Now, that's something that's commonplace, everyone has. And it makes me think about solar and energy, some of these renewables, that when you have a resource like the sun, and when the cost of the installation continues to go down, more and more people are going to use this technology going forward because of the ability to do it, because it's going to be more, it's more cost-effective, and people are more comfortable with the technology. I live in that area, seeing charging stations for electric cars is not something that's odd. My sister has electric cars, she lives in California. So these things are happening, it's just getting more people comfortable-
Yes.
-with it. So I think the consumer market's there. The challenge is coming at the public sector to also embrace some of these technologies. Because on the commercial side, they've been using ESCOs, all kinds of type of ways to reduce costs because they see that as a way of reducing their expenses, because that's another way of enhancing the bottom line. We now need to get the public sector to do the same. So thank you.
This is a win-win-win-win. There's no doubt about it. And Mike, you can count me in, my office will take you up on your offer-
Oh, great.
...to come tour. This has been extremely inspirational for sure, but educational, and quite a teachable moment for those of us who care about sustainability and the environment. This was a great class this afternoon. We thank you all for your testimony. This concludes our hearing on Bill Number 160110 and Resolution Number 160211. Have a great afternoon. Thank you.
Nice to meet you, man. That's fun.
Yeah, well done.
A little call.
Okay. I should state for the record that I've been advised and instructed that Resolution Number 160211 will be placed on hold to the call of the chair. Correct? Okay. Thank you. All right.
These lead to hazardous accumulation of non-biodegradable plastics on both land and in water, where they can stick around for centuries. By asking departments to find alternatives to EPS, the city would be leading by example and asking our municipal purchasing power to improve environmental quality. Our office is committed to working with the procurement department and agencies citywide to provide information on alternatives to EPS, including paper and more rigid plastics. This outreach would be in the context of our much broader effort to improve the environmental impact of all goods and services purchased by the city. The Office of Sustainability therefore supports Bill Number 160110 because it is a smart and sensible step to encourage the use of ready available EPS alternatives. Thank you for the opportunity to testify, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you both as well. For passing the baton to my colleagues, so what does it mean when you say, "Our office is committed to work with the procurement department"? Does that mean you're meeting regularly, quarterly, you're producing reports, you're doing, what are you doing?
Yeah, we've already been meeting regularly since your hearing on sustainable procurement.
Okay.
We've been meeting regularly to work on a number of the commitments that we made to you at that time. We'll also be meeting with other departments regarding their purchasing, since procurement really sort of plays a facilitating role for other departments' needs, so we'll have to be sure to help to bring other departments into that conversation, which we plan on doing.
Yeah. And I think, you know, our next meeting is scheduled for April 26, I believe. And from that, after that meeting, we're going to be looking at expanding the working group to departments across the city.
And so what happens in those meetings? Do you ask what you're doing? Do you ask how you're doing? What's the dialogue?
So we've created a plan to look at, analyze the contracting portfolio that the city has, and looking at the commodities where we're not, where we could be purchasing more sustainably.
And what, then you make recommendations or suggestions?
Yes. So we can make recommendations to departments across the city, and then procurement can sort of, you know, review those requests that come from the departments and sort of encourage them to seek alternatives in ways that they've purchased in the past.
So then, where is the, is there an expectation? You can make recommendations which don't have to be followed. So where is the urge or the enforcement or the nudge-
Right.
-to say, "Do this"?
And, yeah, I think, you know, that's part of our dialogue right now.
So when do you expect to produce a plan? On the second page of your testimony, you talk about two major steps you intend to execute. When do you see a written plan?
I think in probably the first, or the third or fourth quarter of FY17-
Okay.
-we're creating a procurement manual, which is not going to be done until after we've rolled out our new e-procurement system. So once we have that system up and running, we're going to create a manual. And that, a part of that manual is going to be the sustainable procurement.
And two things that are happening more immediately is we're hiring a grad student this summer to, as an intern, to do research for us and sort of map out these different procurement processes and really identify where there's contract opportunities. And I think I mentioned to you at the Sustainable Procurement hearing that we're part of an urban sustainability director's network that's been pulling together a compendium of best practices regarding procurement, and that should be out this summer as well at some point. So once we have that, that should also give us potential ideas that we might want to implement here.
So the research might include how other cities are already doing this?
Right.
Yes.
Very well. And questions for members of the committee? Councilman?
Yes. In the bill, we have, "The procurement department shall whenever the price is reasonably competitive." Your definition, so I understand it as someone who is crafting this bill and is actually a co-sponsor to it, what's your definition of reasonably competitive?
I think that's a, you know, a case-by-case basis, but I would say probably 10, you know, within a 10%, 15%, maybe 20% cost, something like that.
20% gets high. Even 10-
It does.
-can be competitive on a, very, very competitive. Let me be very direct here. Would you be, would you feel better if there were a number associated with, as opposed to reasonably competitive?
I think reasonably competitive creates some ability to be a little bit flexible in, you know, sort of making decisions along with the Office of Sustainability.
Okay. Although to be very direct again, a 10% and a 20% margin is quite a bit of leeway.
Yes.
Okay.
So how are decisions, given that important question, how are decisions ultimately rendered on a matter like this within the department?
I think, I mean, the matter is really going to be decided probably before we put the opportunity out and how we craft the bid. So if we're going to be looking at, let's just say, pipe, paper, you know, you gave the example last, last time we met about paper going from 30% to 100% recycled. If, you know, in conversation with the Office of Sustainability, if we find out that there's really, the market, you know, sort of bears 100% or 80% recycled or 100% recycled, we'll put the bid out with 100% recycled as a requirement. We're not even going to ask for the 30%. Or if we don't know what the market's going to bear, we may put out both within the bid and say, "We're going to require 30% and 100%, and then we'll look at the pricing when the bids come back."
Mm-hmm. So if we want to dig deeper with regards to the, those who do business at the airport, and particularly the food court, how would that happen? Would that, would the stipulation be passed to the airport leadership, who would then have to drill down to ensure that the vendors there are complying? How would that happen?
Yes, that's correct. So the marketplace in the airport is a contract that's owned and managed by the airport, and they would be responsible for managing the requirement under that contract.
The airport leadership would be responsible for making sure the marketplace is in compliance?
Yes.
I see.
And so part of the procurement manual and recommendations that come out of the working group will make those recommendations.
Okay, then. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Members of the committee? Councilwoman Bass, and then back to Councilman Toltonberger.
Thank you. Yeah, I just have one quick question. It's hard for me to get a sense of, you know, how much styrofoam we're actually consuming as a city. It's really hard to get a sense. I know it says in here that it's minimal, but that doesn't really give me a sense when, you know, I have no idea what minimal could mean for a city as large as the city of Philadelphia is.
Sure. So when we took a look at this, we found one commodity off of a citywide contract that had polystyrene foam.
You found one?
One. However, that sort of understates, I think, what the purchasing is, how the purchasing is done across the city. There are other contracts that do not specify, you know, so the marketplace at the airport is a good example. You know, we have a contract in place, there's no tracking of, you know, they've contracted for that service. And there's no way for the City of Philadelphia procurement department or the Office of Sustainability to measure that because we don't track it. So, you know, that tells you, you know, what it tells you.
And in small amounts, I think we've also understood that, you know, if someone goes and purchases supplies for a meeting, and they purchase plates, right, because they have some sort of food, those, they could buy paper plates, they could buy styrofoam plates, we don't really know because they'll just submit, you know, it says petty cash, sort of small amount of reimbursement, so we wouldn't know what kind of plates were purchased.
It's hard to get a sense.
Yeah.
Uh-huh, uh-huh, okay. So, all right, well, thank you.
Councilman?
Yes. The best of your dollars, I know it's not your department, but, and I think you may have testified about it, but the fact, is styrofoam at this moment not a recycled product curbside?
At the curbside, no. There is a facility, I believe it's in the Northeast actually, that does accept it if you drop it off. So an individual at their home or their business could decide to collect it and then drive it up there or, you know, take it in. But at curbside, it is not currently recyclable.
Would that at some point be in your preview or to recommend or not recommend that being picked up on curbside?
Yeah, I mean, we always can renew the sort of markets and see what products, as you know, over the years, there have been additions to sort of safe-
Hold the mic closer, it's always difficult hearing you.
Oh, I'm sorry. We could certainly make recommendations and look into other products that make sense to have collected at the curbside. I think you, over the last few years, we all know, we used to only be able to recycle certain types of plastics, and now we can recycle more. That's really a discussion that should be had with the MRF, and I think you'll actually hear from somebody from the MRF who will be testifying after me. Basically, it all comes down to what's marketable, what you can sell on the marketplace. And the recycling commodities market has taken a major hit in the last several years. So I think it's probably financially unfeasible to add styrofoam into the curbside collection right now. But I'll let Bob Anderson, who's the expert on that, on those numbers, provide them to you when he testifies.
Thank you.
Councilman Green?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So what would be the process trying to evaluate if we want to expand recycling to EPS and other types of products?
Yeah, I think the same answer. You know, I think there's a bit of an economic evaluation. If you have to send, you know, if you have to do additional trips to accommodate additional material, and that's more gas and more man-hours, you know, to then not make money back, you could be losing money. And so I think there's a sort of a evaluation you have to do to see, is this particular commodity marketable or not? And then make the decision from there.
And would that timing analysis also, well, let me step back. Would that analysis also be based on different times of the year? Because I would think that during maybe the holiday season, there may be more of a demand for recycling of this type of product versus-
Generally, this, and I'm stepping into an area that I'm not an expert in, you know, our Streets Department, Sanitation Division certainly are the more of the experts on how they set up these programs. But from my understanding, I don't think there's ever been a seasonal-based commodity acceptance program, other than sort of leaf collection, which occasionally happens, you know, during certain times of the year. In terms of the curbside collection of what goes to our recycling facility, I don't believe there's ever been a seasonal program. I think in part because education-wise, it would probably just be too difficult to tell people when they can and can't be recycling something.
What kind of public awareness activities, programs, initiatives are in place to tell the 1.5 million people of Philadelphia that there actually is a styrofoam recycling place up in the greater Northeast?
I don't know of any in particular. I did not know that myself until we were preparing for this hearing, so I don't know that there is a lot of promotion that's being done around that. But that's something we can certainly talk to the Streets Department and the Sanitation Division about, to see if they have any plans to do that.
Any other questions? What kind of please?
Madam Chair, by chance, would you happen to know the name of that recyclable?
I don't. Do you know? No. I don't, but we will get that to you.
I'd like that, if that could be shared with the committee.
Well, thank you very, very much for your testimony. Oops, forgive me. Councilman Green?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up with the acting procurement commissioner. And I'm not sure if I heard this earlier, are there initiatives in other cities in reference to EPS and procurement that you're aware of?
I am not aware of them, but we can certainly look into that and get back to you.
No, I'm just curious to see if there's any other initiatives that kind ties back into some of the questions that other members of council made earlier.
Absolutely.
So we do what's called a follow-up on this committee? And we actually do ticklers in the office when folks say they're going to promise us a document? So is it fair to say that September 2017 is when we can anticipate the plan that you two have referenced? Is that reasonable? September 2017?
September 2017, well, the third and fourth quarter of FY17 starts in January 2018 and goes through June of 2018.
Okay. All righty. So at the latest, it would be June 2018?
Yes, that's correct.
And the questions that have been raised by members, where you've said, "I'll get back to you and make sure it's reflected in that document"?
Absolutely.
Okay? All right, then. Thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you.
We would now like to ask, invite panel number two, Edward Hazuri, on behalf of Dart Container Corporation, please, and Robert Anderson of the Mid-Atlantic Business Development Manager for RECOMMUNITY.
Please state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony. Please pull your microphone closer to you.
Councilwoman, good afternoon. Ed Hazuri, and representing Dart Container Corporation. Dart is a US company, but they manufacture all over the world. However, they have, their largest facility is just 75 miles away in Lancaster County, where they've got over 1,200 or 1,300 employees. And they make a lot of the products which we're talking about. They make the foam cups, but they also make the rigid, kind of the red solo cup that folks know. They also make the paper cups that you'll have hot drinks in, which aren't exactly paper cups. They're lined, as you know, with a plastic in order to be able to withstand that heat. I'd like to just touch on a couple of points that were made. The first, I think there was one, a question by Councilman Tolbenberger. Up in the north or northeast part of the city, where you can drop off your polystyrene, that the dumpster and the things there are actually provided by Dart to the city at no charge, and then the Streets Department calls Dart when those containers are full. They come from Lancaster, pick them up, and then recycle them up there. Those materials, and I should also say, they don't just pick up their own products, they only use, make food containers. But anything, if you've got a computer packed in styrofoam, they will take anything at all and recycle that. That's turned into small pellets, which then are used no longer to make any food products, but to make packaging, that sort of thing. There are a couple of things that are- There are a couple of things that are interesting when you take a look specifically at the products. The foam cup that we all know, it's actually very little actual product itself, is polystyrene. It's 90% air. And it's that air that gives it the ability to insulate, whether to keep things cold or to keep things warm. When you move to the paper cup lined in plastic, that's when you begin to see the sleeves that you'll see at coffee shops, the cardboard sleeves, or double cupping, that sort of thing. So, it ends up increasing the cost quite a bit. The paper cups are at least double the manufacturer cost, plus they're heavier to transport. So, you have a lot of advantages to the foam containers. In addition, as we've said, the foam is 100% recyclable. Dart has been recycling since 1990 and recycling here in Philadelphia for the last few years. They've also done some other interesting projects down in South Philadelphia in Councilman Johnson's district. They did a holiday collection where the neighbors, the neighborhood associations, put out information to the citizens. They then all brought everything on a certain date. Dart was there with trucks and just took it right away. They've also done it at universities. They'll put collection bins at corporate campuses. Wherever the need is and the volume is there, they're happy to go in. They don't charge for any of this. It's part of their stewardship of their product and other folks who make different products in the foam family. Just to touch on a couple of other things, you had asked about current curbside recycling in the United States. It is done, at this point, in Los Angeles and in Sacramento, California. Certainly, Los Angeles is a much, much larger, and I would guess, logistically, just as difficult as Philadelphia. It goes into the regular waste stream there and then taken apart. Dart has an internal program where they're more than happy to come out, help folks, help cities to try to implement this. They were here last summer, met with, actually, folks in the Streets Department. In addition, met with folks from now Mayor Kenny's staff and talked about it and expressed their willingness to come. And in fact, they would certainly encourage a recycling bill. Let's do it here in Philadelphia. Let's become the first East Coast city to have mandatory curbside recycling. I don't want to go on too far until we can take some questions.
Okay, then, we'll rest it there and hear from our other witness, Robert Anderson.
Yeah, my name is Robert Anderson. I'm with RECOMMUNITY Recycling. RECOMMUNITY is one of the largest pure-play recycling companies in the country. We have 30 facilities in 14 states. We've had the City of Philadelphia contract under the current cycle for about two and a half years, but prior to that, we had the contract for about 12 years before the interim contract. We're here to testify in favor of the bill. You know, recycling is under extreme pressure. Market conditions are extremely challenging. And one of the things that we're really looking forward towards, and one of the initiatives that the city has worked diligently on, is mitigating the amount of contamination that's put at the curbside stream. And so, this bill would help to mitigate and close that portal for potential contamination of the stream, which then devalues the material. The challenges that we have in trying to separate this material curbside is, we use geometry and physics in order to break the material down into individual components. The expanded polystyrene is very lightweight, so it doesn't react like the other containers that are in the stream. And so, in most situations, it would act like a two-dimensional piece of material, and it would follow the paper, and then it would become a contaminant in the paper. I'm not familiar with the curbside programs that have been referenced in terms of Los Angeles or Sacramento. I just know as a company, it's been extremely difficult for us to appreciate how we could have a system that's constructed in order to be able to extract that material. So, the main value for us is, we're really looking to get back to basics and harvest the materials that are in the stream. Let's work towards maximizing the amount of PET that's collected, the amount of HD, the amount of paper, the amount of corrugated, stick with the solid basics of recycling programs, and let's maximize those and extract as much value as we can, rather than trying to expand the spectrum of what it is that we would want to attempt to do curbside. In reference to what's been done in the drop-offs, most of the expanded polystyrene programs that I'm familiar with are drop-off, and we have no exception to a drop-off center. Our sole exception is at curbside. We do have a styrofoam recycling program in New Jersey for one of our smaller commercial firms. That takes solely pre-consumer industrial-type materials, and it doesn't do anything curbside or doesn't take any pit plates or cups or anything that we're referencing here. It only takes, you know, the Home Depot or the Best Buy packaging and pre-consumer packaging is really what we're taking.
That's been very informative. Ms. Anderson, given that this is the business you're in, would it make sense to have one of the bins that's up at the Northeast out at the airport?
I would think that, you know, as you maximize the potential for drop-off, you're going to maximize the potential for recovery. We wouldn't have any capacity at our facility for public drop-off. The trucks, the amount of truck traffic would just be way too hazardous to try to insert any residents into that situation. But, you know, I'm sure that there are locations that could potentially become available for added.
I see. Ed Hazuri, did you tell me that the, my notes here aren't clear, that the drop-off container in the Greater Northeast, is that a Dart operation up there?
Yeah, what happened a couple of years ago was, we sat with the Streets Department when Chlorina Tolson was in charge, and they had agreed that it made sense. And Dart contributed the container, and then they come and pick up as the city calls. Yeah, it's no charge to the city at all.
I see.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, you have any additional recommendations to the city, to us, on how and what we can do better when it comes to recycling, given your expertise, either one or the both of you?
Well, I would just congratulate the Streets Department and the effort that they've made over the last 18 months of our current contract in assuring that they're picking up the commodities that we're looking for. It's been a real dramatic change. And what we do is, we provide the Streets Department with feedback, pictures of loads that are problematic, and then they address each one of those loads with the crews. And so, when we started the program, we were having probably, you know, six, as many as six a day of problem deliveries. And now, we have maybe three to five a month.
Hmm, that's progress.
So, it's been, it's pretty remarkable. You know, I definitely would pat the Streets Department on the back for their efforts over the last 18 months. It's been pretty dramatic.
We must certainly remember to do that when they come before us for budget testimony. Have to lift up departments when they're doing well.
Right.
As well. Thank you.
They catch a lot of flack out there.
That's why we have to lift departments up when they do well. It's important. Well, thank you for your testimony. Ed Hazuri, any other comments, observations you care to make?
You know what, to your point about putting another container in the city, I have to agree, I'm not sure if the airport works, doesn't work. But I would guess Dart would be very interested in a conversation if Streets has a location where they would, where they think they would be able to collect enough material for it to make sense.
Where it makes sense, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, then. Well, that's a note for follow-up as well. Thank you both, gentlemen.
Thank you for your time. Thanks.
Oh, you're welcome. You're welcome. Take a three-minute rest. Just want to recapture some members that are close by, but we can't move to a meeting without the presence of members. Okay, so, we're going to be respectful of your time and move on with the resolution. And we will move to a vote on the bill once we have a quorum that has returned with us. So, let's just move to the first panel that will speak on the resolution. And before we do that, I want to ask the sponsor of the resolution to please provide us with remarks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This opportunity, this conversation regarding solar panels on school district properties, I think is very interesting. Just last week, we had a conversation regarding the boiler explosion at Edmunds Elementary School in the Ninth Council District, as well as a lock school in the Third Council District, which had an HVAC issue. And as many of you in the audience know and others know that we have an equitable funding formula for the school district. So, we're constantly talking about how we bring in additional revenue. But on the other side of the ledger, we also need to look at ways that we can reduce expenses for our schools. And over the course of a number of months, actually going back to the summer, learned that a number of schools, about 4,000 schools across the country, are using solar panels as a way of reducing expenses. In the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, we have about 41 schools that are using solar panels. And we actually have three schools in the City of Philadelphia using solar panels as a way to reduce their energy costs, that being a Philip Randolph Springfield, Springside, Chester Hill Academy, as well as Alvin M. Greenfield School. So, this provides an opportunity to continue that conversation. We know a number of schools in the City of Philadelphia, especially schools like Northeast High School, which probably has about 133,000 of a usable rooftop space for possible solar panels. I know this is an initiative that the school district has been looking at during their own study and research. They will not be providing testimony today, but they are here to listen to the conversation, to continue their analysis, as we continue to look at creative ways to make sure that we provide all the best resources and needs for the children in the City of Philadelphia. We often look at the revenue side, but we also should look at the expense side of the way of providing additional resources for the school district.
And for that, I commend you, Councilman.
Thank you.
It's truly moving to make Philadelphia greener in a substantial way. Let's please ask our first panel to report to witness table. Christine Knapp, Director of the Office of Sustainability; Amanda Byrne, Energy Analyst for the City of Philadelphia; and Adam Agaloco. And I need you to re-pronounce your last name for me so I can get it right. Also, Energy Manager for the City of Philadelphia. And I would like to ask the clerk to read the title of the bill. Thank you.
Resolution 160211, Resolution authorizing the Committee on the Environment to hold hearings to examine the Scholder Schools for Philadelphia report released by Penn Environment, Research and Policy Center, and Frontier Group, and to investigate financing options for the school district of Philadelphia to use its land and building stock for solar energy generation.
Good afternoon. Proceed.
I'm Christine Knapp, Director of the Office of Sustainability. I'm joined with two of my colleagues, Adam Agaloco, the Energy Manager of the Office of Sustainability, and Amanda Byrne, Energy Analyst in the Energy Office. The Office of Sustainability is responsible for Greenworks Philadelphia, the city's comprehensive sustainability plan, one of the goals of which is to increase alternative energy use within, in Philadelphia, including the adoption of solar energy. Our office has no operational role in school district facilities. However, we are happy to share our experience. We have worked closely with the school district on the development of their sustainability plan, which is modeled after Greenworks, and we will continue to assist them in any way that we can. My testimony today will be divided into three sections. One will be a summary of what the city has done to promote solar, streamline city processes related to solar power, and to lower its costs. Two, an overview of current solar market conditions in Pennsylvania. And three, options for solar on-government facilities. On the city's solar efforts thus far, in 2008, Philadelphia was named a Solar America City, a U.S. Department of Energy project that works with municipalities to remove regulatory barriers and reduce soft costs of solar development. With funding from this project, the Office of Sustainability worked with industry stakeholders to develop a guidebook for solar developers outlining a streamlined permitting process for new projects. In 2012, we worked with city council to pass legislation that significantly reduced the cost of solar permitting by excluding the cost of solar panels and inverters and calculating fees. The city continues to work with solar developers and PICO to ensure that existing policies and processes are up to date, and is currently pursuing a SPARC designation. SPARC stands for Solar Powering America by Recognizing Communities through the Department of Energy. This is an information sharing and technical assistance program for local governments. In addition to reducing barriers for private developers, the city has worked to include more alternative energy projects in city facilities, including solar. In 2011, the city unveiled its first solar photovoltaic system located at the Philadelphia Water Department's Southeast Water Pollution Control Plant. The 250-kilowatt solar array consists of more than 1,000 panels covering 60,000 square feet, and its electricity will help power the energy-intensive task of water treatment. The project's total cost of 1.7 million was funded jointly by a Recovery Act Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block grant and the Philadelphia Water Department. On market conditions, the good news is that the cost of installed solar continues to drop nationwide as solar gains mainstream acceptance, is recognized as a cost-competitive source of electricity, and companies develop improved methods to interact with customers. Throughout the nation, state-level policy drives local solar markets, and Pennsylvania's solar industry has lagged in recent years due to inconsistent market signals from Harrisburg and the ending of incentive programs. There have been two states thus far that have previously helped encourage solar development. I won't go into details on them. One is the alternative energy portfolio standard, which has, which basically, at this point, state action would be needed to increase the competitiveness of, in order to increase the SREC market. And the second one is the PA Sunshine Rebate Program. And currently, at this point, unfortunately, there are no state incentives available. Another challenge to local markets for solar is low energy prices. Regional electricity prices are near 12-year lows, making payback on solar investments more challenging. Large institutions like the City of Philadelphia and the school district purchase electricity in bulk and pay lower electricity prices compared to the residential marketplace, making the economics of investment even more challenging. The combination of low electricity prices and limited state incentives makes it hard to economically justify solar projects over short terms. However, projects can still make economic sense over longer time horizons if consumers are comfortable with a longer-term investment. And lastly, in opportunities for solar on-government facilities, current federal tax policy puts government facilities at a disadvantage relative to the private sector for solar projects. Tax-exempt entities like cities and school districts do not qualify for the 30% solar investment tax credit, or federal rules on accelerated depreciation of assets that help finance solar installations. While there's nothing to prevent the direct installation and ownership of solar panels by a city or school, no federal incentives can be used, thus making projects less attractive compared to private ownership. Simply put, cities and schools are not the most cost-efficient owners of solar projects. To make solar more cost-efficient, the best option for schools or government entities is to purchase solar energy through a power purchase agreement, or a PPA. The Energy Office within the Office of Sustainability is exploring this option as a vehicle for projects on city-owned buildings. A PPA would involve a private solar development company entering into an agreement to build, own, and operate a solar system on city-owned property. The city would directly consume the solar electricity and enter into a long-term purchase agreement of the electricity to pay for the installation. Because the panels are owned by a third-party solar developer, the 30% solar federal tax credit applies to the project, and the city would receive a reduced electricity price as a result. As the city and the school district explore potential solar options, we strongly encourage considering efficiency improvements before installing alternative energy systems. By improving a building's energy efficiency first, you reduce the size and the cost of the solar system needed. Already, we have seen that energy efficiency measures in city facilities reduce costs more effectively than solar and has higher co-benefits, like increasing comfort, resilience, and often addressing infrastructure that needs improvement. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony today and happy to take your questions.
We thank you. Let's hear from the entire panel. Amanda Byrne?
So, the panelists are here to help me answer any of your questions because they are the deep-level impact experts into solar. So, they're really here to back me up for your very hard questions that I know you'll bring.
Well, let's first get Adam's name correctly on the record.
Sure, it's Adam Agaloco.
Adam?
Agaloco.
Agaloco, okay. Thank you. Councilman Green? Agalaco. Okay. Thank you. Councilman Green?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Knapp, thank you for your testimony. And you made reference to a power purchase agreement as probably the best way in reference to doing some type of solar initiative. And that, to me, seems like a P3 or public-private partnership type of opportunity. And you said, based on your testimony, that provides stability for federal tax credits. Has there been any conversations with the Wolf administration in reference to solar energy? I know under Governor Rendell's administration, we had Growing Greener 1 and 2, which provide an opportunity to kind of move the solar industry in some way. I know Governor Christie had done a lot of work in New Jersey in reference to the solar market. I haven't heard of that type of conversation going on at the state level. Is that something you're aware of?
Not that we've been a part of thus far, although I have been talking with some of my colleagues in Pittsburgh about jointly going to Harrisburg together and talking to some of the agencies there, and talking to the governor's policy office about some of our priority issues. I skipped over the part about the Alternative Energy Portfolio Standard, but that's really the place where I think there's the biggest opportunity for Harrisburg to help drive the solar market. There's two things that the legislature can do. One is to increase the size of the Alternative Energy Portfolio Standard, basically making us more competitive with surrounding states. The other one is to sort of close the borders and only allow power that's developed within Pennsylvania to be used as to meet the criteria of that standard. Either one of those things could help move a long way. Right now, we basically have bled a lot of the renewable energy jobs that were created in Pennsylvania to our surrounding neighboring states that have stronger requirements than we do. So I think there's an opportunity, and we haven't been a part of that discussion yet, but it's certainly on our to-do list.
So have you registered those two possible actions with the governor's office or the legislature?
Not yet. We, like I said, we were planning on trying to go with our Pittsburgh colleagues to do that at some point, probably before the end of this legislative session.
Okay, all right. And do you think that it will be a heavy lift?
Well, when the bill was first passed, the GEMESA, which is a large wind company, was one of the lobbyists for it. And they said not only would they, they wanted to locate their North American headquarters somewhere in Pennsylvania, and they wanted to set up a wind turbine manufacturing facility as well. And they said not only would they not move here if it didn't pass, but they also wouldn't move here if it didn't pass with bipartisan support, because they didn't want to set up a business to have it be at the whim of political, you know, changes every couple of years. So having a strong voice like that could help make sure that this isn't a partisan issue, that this is about good local jobs and clean energy. So I personally feel optimistic that it's possible, but we had to get, I think we had to get a budget first, and there were other priorities in Harrisburg, certainly.
What my ask would be, in a way that's appropriate through the administration, would be that you keep members of this committee informed of your discussions with members of the Philadelphia delegation, as we do enjoy relationships with many of those members. And for those who get it and want to wrap their head around this type of issue, we would appreciate knowing that, so that we can do our own advocacy from where we sit. That would be very, very helpful.
Thank you.
And lastly, could Amanda and Adam just give me an elevator description of the work that you do?
Sure. The Energy Office is part of the Office of Sustainability, so we're essentially the municipal operational arm for energy in city government. So we do everything from purchasing to procurement of the city's electricity, natural gas, steam supplies, vehicle fuel, as well as managing and kind of doing the day-to-day of utility bills. The city gets about 6,000 utility bills on an average month. We capture that data and we basically are able to turn it into usable information for departments and for our own use. The last function that we serve is around programs and projects. So we are kind of the central hub for municipal operation of installing energy efficiency within city facilities, exploring renewable energy opportunities.
That was big. So is that initiative still ongoing?
Yeah, I started with the city six years ago in the Office of Sustainability, and the Energy Office has kind of grown out of part of the Office of Sustainability, formerly the Mayor's Office of Transportation and Utilities. We now have three, will soon have four, full-time employees.
Very, very good. Please?
So within that, and specific to this hearing today, I've been helping to coordinate conversations between local solar installers and our LNI department.
You have to talk louder and talk into the mic.
Oh, sorry. And I'm, sorry, my voice is a little bit low today. But I've been helping coordinate conversations between local solar installers and our LNI department, just to make sure that everybody is up to speed on what the latest technologies are and making sure that any issues that come up are, you know, well-communicated to our LNI department. That's one of the things, just specific to today, that I do within our office.
Okay. You said LNI?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
All right then. Well, Councilwoman Bass? Okay, very well. We thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
We want to invite up the next panel. Zoe Sina Scolar, Campaign Organizer for Penn Environment; Matt Walker, Community Outreach Director for Clean Air Council; Michael Neal, Apprenticeship Training Director for the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers. Good afternoon. We'll start with Zoe Sinar Scolar. State your name and proceed with your testimony.
Good afternoon. My name is Zoe Sina Scolar, and I am a campaign organizer with Penn Environment. I want to thank Chairwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilwoman Green, and all of the members of the Philadelphia City Council for holding this important hearing today. Penn Environment is a statewide, citizen-based environmental advocacy group with nearly 40,000 contributing members, volunteers, and online activists in the Philly area. Last month, we released a new report, Solar Schools for Philadelphia, which outlined the environmental and economic benefits of installing solar panels on Philadelphia's public schools. I am glad to be here today to continue the conversation about solar schools and to discuss next steps. Our report shows that the school district of Philadelphia could cover nearly 40% of its electricity needs by installing solar panels on the rooftops of the city's public schools. These solar installations would save taxpayers millions of dollars that would otherwise go toward paying the school district's electricity bills, while also reducing pollution and creating local jobs. These savings would in turn free up more money for the things that we actually want to fund in our school system, like teachers, school nurses, counselors, and other educational necessities. It is also important to note that there are various financing models, including power purchase agreements, which would allow the school district to pursue this project without additional upfront costs. Penn Environment is incredibly excited that the school district of Philadelphia could become a national solar leader, all while saving money, creating jobs, providing educational opportunities, and fostering a healthy environment. We hope that this report will serve as a jumping-off point for the school district and for the city of Philadelphia to make a significant commitment to installing solar on Philadelphia school buildings. Our report contains a number of policy recommendations. First, we call on the state to strengthen Pennsylvania's commitment to solar energy by increasing the Renewable Energy Standards solar energy requirement, and also by mandating that all solar energy credits be generated in state. Secondly, we call on the city to require that any extensive school renovations include a plan to study the cost-effectiveness of solar panels, and also to require that any new school buildings use solar panels. And finally, we call on the school district of Philadelphia to create a program to put solar panels on public schools across the city. While this is certainly a bold vision, it is not unprecedented. There are nearly 4,000 schools across the country, including 41 here in Pennsylvania, with solar installations. And with the cost of solar coming down, there is a growing awareness of solar power as a mainstream energy solution with considerable benefits for our health, our economy, and our environment. What's more is that Pennsylvanians are already incredibly enthusiastic about expanding solar energy in the Commonwealth. A recent bipartisan poll found that over 80% of Pennsylvanians want to increase the state's use of renewable energy sources. In sum, solar schools are a triple win for our environment, our economy, and the city students. For anyone who's interested in reading our full report, you can find it on our website, pennenvironment.org. I also have fact sheets with me today that have more details on the report's finding. Again, I want to express my appreciation to Chairwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilwoman Green, and all of the members of city council for allowing me to testify today. Thank you.
Matt Walker?
Thanks. My name is Matt Walker, and I'm the Community Outreach Director with Clean Air Council. We're an environmental health organization with nearly 10,000 members, working to improve air quality across the region and the state for more than 45 years. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Clean Air Council has promoted renewable energy in Pennsylvania since the council formed Community Energy, Inc., Incorporated, which brought the first commercial wind farm to Pennsylvania in 1998. Since then, the council has helped spur growth in solar energy by signing up customers to purchase 100% Pennsylvania-produced solar energy. Despite languishing state policies, the council continues to promote renewable energy through a variety of programs aimed to spur residential demand. For example, in early 2015, the council recently partnered with the Sustainable Business Network to implement a pilot Solarize campaign in Philadelphia to encourage homeowners to purchase rooftop solar. The council organized workshops for homeowners to learn about how to use their collective buying power to get systems for their properties at greatly reduced costs. Through the program, we educated over 125 people and got 15 households to go solar. Our total impact was about 75 kilowatts of installed solar, about the equivalent of planting over 25,000 trees. There's no more serious health, public health, environmental justice, or economic development threat than climate change. Pennsylvania is the third-largest emitter of greenhouse gases in the United States, and it contributes approximately 1% of all greenhouse gas emissions worldwide. Our consumption of energy, specifically fossil fuels such as coal, oil, and natural gas, is one of the main causes of the air pollution that has resulted in polluted cities and towns in a warming climate. Residents of Philadelphia are exposed to chronic elevated levels of air pollution. The Philadelphia region is not in attainment of the federal standards for ground-level ozone, which is the main constituent of smog. Reducing air pollution is crucial for Philadelphia, where about 1 in 4 children are diagnosed with asthma, nearly double the national average. And ground-level ozone aggravates lung diseases such as asthma, emphysema, and chronic bronchitis, and increases the frequency of asthma attacks. Philadelphia's resource-strained neighborhoods are often impacted the most from air pollution and weather extremes, both of which are exacerbated by climate change. But they could also reap the positive health effects of a city that focuses on using more clean sources of energy that displace dirtier fossil fuels. Displacing fossil-fuel-produced energy with renewable energy is one of the best ways to make a dent in tackling Philadelphia's public health issues and curbing climate change. Using more renewable energy reduces premature death, lost workdays, and healthcare costs, and provides thousands of local jobs. Scientists with the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change stated in their most recent report that to avoid catastrophic climate change, renewable energy must be the dominant energy source by 2050. Penn Environment's recent Solar Schools for Philadelphia report details one way that Philadelphia could put more solar energy into our electricity mix. The report found that Philadelphia's schools have 100 acres of available rooftop space and could collectively generate 37% of the school system's annual electricity use. Installing solar on schools provides a great educational opportunity and direct exposure to one of the fastest-growing industries in the country, and would also protect schools from the highly volatile prices of fossil-fuel energy such as oil and natural gas. Clean Air Council strongly supports city council in working with the Philadelphia School District to put solar panels on Philadelphia schools as quickly as possible. If city council and the Philadelphia School District bring more solar energy to Philadelphia, they would help spur local, well-paying, and safe jobs for Philadelphians that cannot be outsourced. Solar jobs pay almost double the national average at $21 per hour. Based on National Renewable Energy Laboratory Data, NREL, the council estimates that in Philadelphia, cost-effective rooftop solar can produce about 25% of the city's electricity needs, provide more than 4,000 jobs, well-paid jobs, increase grid reliability, and over 20 years, bring about $1 billion worth of direct economic activity annually for the Philadelphia area. Less than 1% of Philadelphia's electricity, of Philadelphia's current electricity, comes from rooftop solar. The solar industry and the location of solar energy installations and production has the potential to create a workforce more representative of the city's demographics than fossil-fuel energy sectors have. The solar workforce continues to have a more diverse workforce than many other industry sectors, including coal and natural gas. Opportunities for strong and coordinated workforce development initiatives for solar energy are crucial for ensuring that Philadelphia's workforce is fully prepared to fill job openings in one of the fastest-growing job sectors in the country. As an example of one small training initiative, Clean Air Council is partnering with local installer solar states on a workforce development training program at the Youth Build Charter School in North Philadelphia to prepare youth there with the installation and marketing skills necessary to be competitive in the solar industry. Pennsylvania lags far behind surrounding states in policies that advance solar. While American solar jobs increased by 20% in 2013, Pennsylvania lost 1,100 solar jobs, more than a quarter of our market. Pennsylvania's solar renewable energy credits are worth a lot less than other states because the Pennsylvania Alternative Energy Portfolio Standards allows the Commonwealth to purchase ESRECs from other states. Other states are installing a lot more solar than Pennsylvania. As a result of Pennsylvania's lagging policies, Philadelphia is well-positioned to play an important role in promoting renewable energy. Philadelphia could explore and act upon the following policy and financial mechanisms to advance renewable energy. Include solar installations in the tax abatement policy. Give developers and the subsequent homeowners at least a year of tax breaks if solar panels are installed. Support the purchase of additional renewable energy credits from the Philadelphia region to cover the amount of electricity used by the city. And allow for expedited permitting from LNI. In closing, solar energy has a lot to offer the Philadelphia region in terms of economic growth, jobs, and public health and environmental benefits. The council urges city council to work with the Philadelphia School District to put solar on Philadelphia schools as quickly as possible, and then to develop specific policies that will demonstrate Philadelphia's leadership in environmental sustainability. Thank you for your time to speak here today.
You're very welcome. Did you submit written testimony?
Yeah.
You did? Okay, so it must be at the table. Okay, then. We'll follow up with questions after we hear from Michael Neal, International Brotherhood of the Electrical Workers. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. It is a privilege and an honor for me to have the opportunity to speak before this committee today representing IBW Local 98. My name is Michael Neal. I come before you today as a proud graduate of South Philadelphia High School, who has spent my entire life working and raising my family in Philadelphia. Today, I have the privilege of leading IBW Local 98's apprentice training program, which provides hundreds and hundreds of young men and women from around the Philadelphia area the opportunity to learn a trade, and more importantly, as Secretary Labor Perez says, earn a golden ticket to the middle class. I am here to speak in favor of this proposal on behalf of the 4,500 members of IBW Local 98 who work to install, design, and maintain electrical equipment and systems in Philadelphia every day. I know there will be a lot of testimony on this proposal that addresses the issues from many different perspectives. I briefly want to tell you about three primary reasons IBW 98 here is to support this initiative. First, from a purely technical perspective, I could tell you that increasingly more and more electrical system designers and engineers are recognizing that solar and distributed energy systems significantly increase the efficiency and effectiveness of the electrical distribution system. The efficiency of solar products and panels is dramatically increasing, and the technology itself is enough to make the case for installing these systems. We can see that nearby, in the tremendous development of the Philadelphia Navy Yard, each day, the Navy Yard seemingly grows bigger and distinguishes itself as one of the leading DOE GridStar programs in the U.S. This proposal will help extend what is occurring at the Navy Yard. Second, from an economic perspective, this proposal makes tremendous sense. With the increased efficiency of solar panels and equipment comes an increasingly economic benefit for those who include solar in their electrical system design. Quite simply, solar pays back. I know this firsthand, as we at IBW Local 98 long ago decided to equip all our building and training locations in Philadelphia with solar panels and technology. This proposal has a poetical, to reduce the cost of delivery of electricity to our Philadelphia schools. Last, and perhaps the most important, I'm here to speak in support of this proposal because of the social impact proposals like this can have on our community. Each year, I firsthand, I see firsthand how providing jobs throughout our IBW apprentice program changes the lives of young men and women here in Philadelphia. I see every day how excited our apprentices are to learn and work on the installation of these systems. It literally helps them change their lives. Proposals like this make sense for many reasons. They are technically sound, they come with an economic benefit and cost savings, and most importantly, allow us to provide and advance the opportunity for a great career for many young men and women in Philadelphia who desperately need... for many young men and women in Philadelphia who desperately need this opportunity. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today.
Very, very welcome, all of you. I do have questions, but I will ask that Councilman Green. Please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to state on the record, I want to thank all the great work that Penn Environment has done on this issue, both David and Zoe, and working with interesting partners like PFT and IBW to kind of bring this idea of solar panels to the city of Philadelphia, especially the school districts. Also, I know the work you've done with Frontier Group. And as the last panelists just spoke about, job opportunities. You know, the Council President Clark announced earlier this year his energy initiative. This is something that's closely aligned in that team concept of providing job opportunities to the city of Philadelphia, because not only does it provide an opportunity to reduce expenses at the school district, but it also provides a job opportunity at a local level. I think too often, we don't leverage our assets, assets are not just financial assets, but physical assets like school buildings as a way to provide more jobs in the city of Philadelphia. We all know we have one of the highest rates of poverty in the nation, and to the extent of using this way of not only reducing expenses for the schools, but also providing an opportunity for more local jobs. And then finally, it also provides a unique perspective to expose young people to other jobs. So when a child who's at a school and they see someone who may be doing something in reference to solar, it may expose them to a whole wealth of opportunities, of job opportunities, that they may have never even thought about, prior to someone putting a solar panel on their school building, which provides all kinds of opportunities. So I just want to thank you for the work that you've done. Thank you for bringing this idea to my attention, and we'll continue to focus and try to make things move forward. So, thank you.
I want to underscore the perspective and the philosophy and the expectation that while we move to do this because it's the right thing to do, we also want to make sure we do it right. And doing it right means that young people from Philadelphia, I'll repeat, from Philadelphia, whose parents are taxpayers here, should have first opportunity to learning these jobs of the future. Anything over that is unacceptable. And so to hear an advocacy organization like Clean Air Council speak to the job development, the workforce development component, is quite, quite encouraging. I will say to you, it's not a habit that we see often, where advocacy organizations dig deeper to delve and look at the workforce development aspects, so that's quite encouraging. I need to say thank you as well. Please tell us, Mike O'Neill, the kinds of things you're already doing over there around solar panel training, solar panel development, solar panel installation, I guess it would be called, right?
Solar panel installation. All five of our buildings have solar insulation on them, going from a small 3KW system all the way up to 31KW. We installed our first solar array on one of our buildings in 1999.
Wow.
Over probably 2,500 of our members have went through solar training. Our apprenticeship curriculum consists of over 1,100 instructional hours, where about 80 of those hours focus on solar installations. Part of solar installations, as I said, is in electrical distribution, so it's a lot more of just understanding how to put a solar panel together, or how to take it out of a box. As soon as you take a solar panel out of a box, it starts generating electricity.
Wow.
So our main concern is making sure that the members, when they understand it, is safe in doing that.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, there is no standalone, separate solar apprentice class?
Not for us.
Okay. All right, then. And how, okay, so if there's no standalone, separate solar installation class, then the apprentice training program captures all aspects of your world?
Correct.
I see. Okay, then. Questions, Council Lady? Jim?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So, one question I had for Mr. O'Neill. So I know that you've been invested in looking at solar. I think the council, Madam Chair, noted that there's not exactly an apprenticeship program for solar, is that right?
There's not a separate program for just solar. Our program consists of 8,000 on-the-job hours and 1,100 classroom hours. Out of those 1,100 classroom hours, we focus a little bit over 80 hours on solar installation. But throughout their 1,100 hours, electrical safety is a big part of it. You know, as you've seen what happened over the bridge with the fire, it probably was maybe installed by an unqualified person.
Would you consider more hours invested in solar apprenticeships if this project expands more?
Our program is built around to be able to change. We have a core curriculum that the whole IBW around the country goes to for two years, and then after that, the next three years, you have the opportunity, by your jurisdiction, on what is crucial to that area to be able to focus on, so you can change. For example, in Philadelphia, our apprentice program relies heavily on hazardous locations because of our work at the refinery. We spend a lot of time on healthcare because of our major hospitals. So if in Los Angeles or California has installed more solar, they may put more of that part of the curriculum into their apprenticeship program.
Let me attempt to answer the ask it a different way. Is it possible to have a solar apprentice program strictly to train Philadelphia-area students in the expertise of solar installation, and them have a bona fide certificate, license, whatever required, to be then sent to Girls' High School where I attended, or Morton McMichael in Mantra, to put solar on top of those buildings?
Under the Department of Labor guidelines for the state of Pennsylvania, I said on the state apprenticeship council, a minimum of 160 hours of classroom instruction per year has to be part of the on-the-job training.
A minimum of 150?
160.
60, gotcha.
And so I think the question was, you provide 80 right now, right?
We provide 80 for an electrician.
And so what we're trying to understand is...
Can you build an apprenticeship just for solar? I don't think there's enough there.
Okay.
Unless you include all aspects of the electrical trade.
Which includes safety and...
Correct.
I see.
Community College of Philadelphia received a grant from the Department of Labor in Pennsylvania a couple of years ago for $5 million, and sent students through a 32-hour course on solar. And my concern always over the years is where are they at now? What are they doing with that?
Yes.
So we're looking to, you know, if we're going to invest in solar, and if we're going to make sure that it works well, then we have to make sure that we have the appropriate programs to bring people in there, and we have to partner with organizations and groups that are going to ensure that that is the case. So it's important for us to get clarity about who is able to actually do that and be a full partner on that. It becomes, you know, probably less of a priority if somebody is not able to be a full partner on that, so it's partly why we're trying to get some clarity here on who has the capacity, as well as who's thinking ahead on that. So in light of that, did you have any other perspectives on that?
We're not the only ones providing education in the solar industry.
Is that right?
Right. I mean, we're just, you know, we represent the 4,500 members under IBW 98.
Right. And just for clarity, you're saying that IBW only provides 80 hours, the state of Pennsylvania requires 160 hours for certification?
IBW Local 98 has an apprentice program that has 250 hours per year, over the 160.
I see.
We have 90 hours over, and we also have a five-year program. To have an apprenticeship program approved just as an installer store, you'd have to have 160 hours of curriculum per year.
Devoted solely to solar?
Devoted strictly to solar.
Which you currently are not doing, nor you're not looking at it as a possibility right now?
No.
Okay. So that helps in terms of clarifying, you know, where priorities, partnerships could be. And, you know, for your other apprenticeships, would you say that what percentage of Philadelphia district students participate in the IBW program, apprenticeship program?
We're lucky enough to work with the school district of Philadelphia every day. PHA, we're a founder of our own charter high school. Those exact numbers, I wouldn't know, probably...
Could we find that out, maybe?
Yeah.
That would be great, yeah. And I'm looking mostly at district-managed public schools, trying to understand, because we're looking at, as we work on, you know, turning around some of our neighborhood high schools and programs that go in them, it would be helpful to know, again, you know, really strong partners who could help with that. So thank you very much.
Councilman Green?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you were talking, it made me think of the work that Liz Robinson has been doing in reference to returning citizens and providing opportunities to get involved in energy retrofits for residential homeowners, and creating a whole industry where entrepreneurs have been created, and now employees of those entrepreneurs also went through the ECA program. Has there been any conversation in reference to either reaching out to Energy Coordinating Agency in reference to the work that they've done, especially in the area of returning citizens, as we often talk about providing job opportunities, but not just job opportunities, but entrepreneurship opportunities? Has there been any conversations in that regard in reference to providing some type of collaboration with her organization? Ask for any of the panelists.
I'll just note, and I'm Matt Walker with Clean Air Council. I'll just note that we, the council has, I have spoken to Liz Robinson about our solar youth program, and wanting to get sort of feedback on that from her, and figure out, you know, opportunities for future collaboration. But that's sort of, you know, that's where the conversations are right now.
I personally, this is Zoe from Penn Environment, I have not had those conversations myself, but can follow up on whether other folks have had that conversation.
I do not mean at all to be rude, I'm trying to do what's called multitasking, and I'm failing. So if you repeat your comment, please.
No worries. So I was just saying that I personally have not had those conversations, but will need to follow up to see whether other individuals within my organization have spoken to Liz on that subject.
Okay.
Yeah, and I guess the reason why I'm saying that, considering that number of the people that have gone through her training program, who now have started businesses, to the extent that they can maybe broaden their business, and now are doing energy retrofits of homes, but also maybe going into the solar industry as well, and maybe also providing opportunity for joining maybe IBW as well. So I think, like I said earlier, I'm a fan of not trying to reinvent the wheel, so you already have an organization that's working with a number of returning citizens who are now either received jobs, have actually started their own businesses, to the extent they can grow their business from doing not just energy retrofits, but now getting about solar, is still within the umbrella of energy, and also is another way of helping a, it just provides another product or service that that business can go to a customer, saying not only can I help you reduce your energy costs by making changes in your property, but also there may be a way of providing solar as well.
Yeah, I will editorialize and underscore the extraordinary work that Liz Robinson and Energy Coordinating Office do every single day, trying to make people's lives better, and doing it through the prison of energy conservation, and being authentic about reaching to citizens who want a second chance at life, like returning citizens, and others who want to move in a real tangible way to what we call energy conservation. She is extraordinary, that's my two cents. Okay, thank you very much for your testimony. We would now invite up our staff representative from the Philadelphia Federation of Teachers, Hillary Leonardopoulos. That's one, two, three, four, five, six syllables. Okay. And Saleem Chapman, Policy and Advocacy Manager for the Sustainable Business Network, and Walter Su. Walter Su, welcome back, President of the Physicians for Social Responsibility. Good afternoon, good afternoon. Proceed with his testimony. We'll start with the Philadelphia Federation of Teachers Advocate Champion.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Councilwoman, and the Councilmen, excuse me, also. I'm Hillary Leonardopoulos of the Philadelphia Federation of Teachers. I'd like to thank the Committee on the Environment, and particularly Councilman Green for inviting us to testify today, and for his initiative on the solar panel endeavor. So we're very, very appreciative of how laser-focused city council is on issues that affect our most vulnerable citizens, our children. Further, it is extremely significant that many different committees are looking at public education through a variety of different lenses. This approach speaks to how council sees public education as an issue that permeates well beyond the Committee on Education, and in order for Philadelphia to move forward, we cannot see our schools in isolation. So thank you, Councilman Green, for not only holding this hearing, but also for holding hearings on facilities conditions and asking pointed and significant questions of the school district. While PFT's involvement in the solar panel initiative might seem far-fetched for some, it is because of the leadership of Penn Environment and this city council that we are able to recognize that tying this initiative to what goes on in our schools every day and the overall fight for public education is, in fact, very relevant. So there are very, very glaring inequities in our schools. Today, this is the reality for so many children, including well over half of our students attending schools without full-time nurses. Forty-nine students, although I heard a modified number this morning, so I will check on that. Forty-nine schools lacking a full-time counselor, nearly 20 schools with a nurse one day a week or less, and oversized classes nearing 500. Somewhere in addition, the range of about 175 to 185 vacancies remain, meaning that there are classrooms across the district where students have yet to see a full-time teacher. This as mandated testing begins today, and students, schools will be judged, and students themselves will be judged based on test scores in a class that perhaps has never had a full-time teacher. All of this while the school district lauds their immediate financial stability. It was Councilman Green who, in Thursday's hearing, said what so many of us are thinking, that it is a very mixed message that the district is sending. The solar panel initiative provides a unique opportunity to engage in an innovative funding mechanism that will have a long-lasting fiscal impact on our schools, and perhaps even more significantly, a long-lasting environmental impact on our city. PFT remains in full support of this initiative, and we remain grateful to Penn Environment, our brothers and sisters at IBW, and city council, who remain committed to seeing their role in contributing to our children's education. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, we'll wait till we finish with our panel. Saleem Chapman?
Good afternoon. My name is Saleem Chapman, and I'm the Policy and Advocacy Manager at the Sustainable Business Network of Greater Philadelphia. SBN is a nonprofit membership organization for locally-owned businesses, committed not just to profit, but to making a positive social and environmental impact through our business. Our mission is to create an economy in the Philadelphia region that is based on those same principles, one that is locally-based, socially equitable, and environmentally sustainable. I'm going to take the Councilwoman's lead and go off-script and editorialize a little bit. I think a lot of my colleagues have really spoke to the stats and facts as to why this is an important thing to do, so I wanted to speak personally. I got into this line of work, I went over to SBN after working many years in environmental justice, because I believe that the next step of environmental justice was really to put to end the false choice between environmental sustainability and economic viability. And I think one way of doing that is creating more viable job opportunities for non-traditional audiences, as I like to say. When I started out as a high school youth, I didn't see my career path in environmental sustainability. I happened here by happenstance, but I have learned to grow in this movement and really have made a very passionate career out of it that I've learned to enjoy. And I think that other students would be able to do the same thing if they were able to get early industry exposure and see the opportunities and career paths that are available to them. SBN has really seen this within the green stormwater industry... SBN has really seen this within the green stormwater industry, and there's great programs such as PowerCore Philadelphia, that's really showing that once you provide exposure to these new industries, once you give people the chance, they'll take advantage of it and become passionate advocates for it. Obviously, I spend most of my time advocating for these programs, but I'll tell you that some of those individuals in PowerCore Philadelphia can do a much better job of advocating for those programs than I can, despite never, again, never seeing themselves in that field as well. And so I think that this opportunity, despite what the merits might be, is an opportunity to have a concrete dialogue about how we can move that conversation forward, and for no other reason, I think that we should continue to support.
Okay, then, thank you. Good afternoon. Welcome back.
Good afternoon, thank you. Councilwoman Reynolds Browns, and members of the Committee on Environment, thank you for this invitation to speak today. My name is Dr. Walter Su, and I served as former Health Commissioner of the city and past President of Philadelphia Physicians for Social Responsibility. I speak today in favor of the urgent need to move away from fossil fuels and to renewable energy sources. The greatest public health and environmental threat to all coastal cities worldwide is climate change. The urgency of keeping our global temperatures rise well below 2 degrees Celsius, as agreed upon at COP21 in Paris, is well-known. And Philadelphia can join this effort in many ways, but certainly increasing the use of solar panels in public buildings, including our schools, is a concrete and exciting way for showing our young people that we adults are working to make amends for our past transgressions. From a public health perspective, we can reduce the burning of fossil fuels, which contributes to air pollution, nitrous oxide, sulfur dioxide, smog, and asthma, which does contribute to our overall healthcare costs. The latter issue of asthma is the leading medical reason for school absenteeism. As a personal note, I have a daughter at Masterman, as does Councilwoman Taublerberger and Councilwoman Gimm, and my daughter repeatedly tells me that the building is oppressively hot in the winter and inadequately air-conditioned in the summer. No doubt, we waste a lot of energy in our schools, which we are paying for as taxpayers. Efforts to better control our energy costs will undoubtedly save hundreds of thousands of dollars in energy bills alone, an imperative given our perennial school deficit. We also can save tremendous amounts of money on our healthcare costs, although I cannot guarantee or quantify building solar panels in our schools in terms of how much it might reduce our healthcare costs, but I do think it does contribute to our overall health benefits. There are many more details of benefits noted in the Penn Environment report. Supply expansions have resulted in much more competitive pricing for solar panels, and if it's amortized over the life of the school building, it starts to make a lot of sense. So in overall, I'll shortly say that I support the idea of creating solar panels for our school buildings. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Well, we thank all of you, and I want to ask Councilwoman Gimm?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Chair, and I have to say how much I enjoy all three of your testimonies and the contributions all three of you have made to the city. It's been really great. So I wanted to direct one question to Mr. Chapman, and in part because, you know, we want to emphasize what a great opportunity solar presents to all of us. It's an expanded new technology, it's an opportunity to think through business, it's obviously going to think through how we take a look at our schools, it's going to impact climate change and all. But I also think it's really important as we venture into anything, and in part, it's why I'm particularly interested in a partnership with SBN, to kind of think through the cold realities of how this becomes very real in a way that actually benefits diverse economic communities in Philadelphia, where we diversify the contractors, where we ensure that people in the labor aspect of it are benefiting, that students in the apprenticeship aspects are benefiting, that we're improving our understanding of who qualifies as a sustainable business in Philadelphia, that we help professionalize that standard. And I'm wondering if you could maybe speak to some, some of what you think might be the most significant obstacles that the city council in particular should look at with kind of a very clear eye. So, it's not to say that we're not enthusiastic, or hopeful and optimistic about how this rolls out, but I think the, the most important aspect of this, to do it well, is to be very forward-thinking and clear-eyed about some of the significant obstacles that currently face us, what we need, what are some of the things that we need to move on in order to make it particularly successful, whether that's new certification, we don't currently, for example, have local NWE certification anymore, and whether that's particularly important to ensure the diversity of it, and I think that SBN, you know, is trying to keep its eye on all of that. I don't expect you, by the way, to answer all of this, but, you know, if there's some way that maybe you could identify a few, and then work with the committee and, you know, be a voice in thinking through what we need to be focused on in order for it to be the kind of vision you see it as.
Yeah, I would love to get back to you more in the specifics. I think what I can talk to broadly is, is that in most cases, the city, as long as with the colleagues of advocacy, is already doing a lot of great work. I think opportunities like we have here today, where we can have a dialogue to see all the different things that are often going on in silos, to really put them all out front and have a continued and concerted dialogue about that, is the important thing. I think the one thing we need to do is, is to make sure we're actively are trying to engage other stakeholders and making them realize why it's relevant to them, right? It took me a really long time to understand why sustainability was important and relevant to my daily existence, and you make that, that becomes even more difficult when you're talking about people who's facing socioeconomic challenges. So I think to the extent that we can produce it in, in realities where we're showing, like, this isn't just about environmental sustainability, this isn't just about making the planet healthier, which are all important goals, but there are actually practical realities where you can provide a viable career pathway to individuals where they never thought one was possible, and showing them that you may not even have to go to college to do it. I mean, for a lot of people, we promote college and we want them to certainly go that route, but just being realistic, that's not an opportunity that everybody can pursue, and letting them know that even if you don't have the opportunity to do that, there are other opportunities available which can provide a very high-wage, family-sustaining income, and I think solar energy is one way of doing that. And to your point, SBN will continue to, to look at how we can boost both policies and programming to making sure that we are supporting the social equity goals and supporting the business community, and making sure that we're making all this a reality.
So, I think that the areas that I, that I think I heard a little bit, I would also be very interested in a community engagement process around expanded, you know, this expansion in this area, because I think it is important to hear from people about how they connect with it. I...